There he is. All right. Good evening, everyone. We are now going to start the meeting of the City Council Subcommittee on Conference to be held on Monday, April 12th, 2021, 6:00 PM. This meeting will discuss the following matter. To discuss free cash requests by the city manager, officials invited to attend the Subcommittee meeting is the city manager Tom Marabizino, who is president, honorable members of the city council, and all members of the public. At this time, the city clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Vido, Counselor Abadina.
Present.
Counselor Recupero.
Yeah.
Counselor Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Vega Maldonado. Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Here.
Is she here?
He's here.
Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
And Counselor Zabit.
Present.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Nine members present here have a call, Mr. Chairman.
Nine present. So we received a communication and then a number of orders were introduced by our Chair of Finance Committee, Counselor Leo Robinson. They will be up for vote tonight. So the communication was from the city manager and we'll just go specifically, I think the best thing is just to go over them. So if the city manager wants to come up and we'll go over each line item by line item and if anyone has any questions on any of the particular line items specifically, then I'll let the colleague go forward. So, city manager?
So, thank you, Mr. President. So let me just say, I've submitted these 12 items to you. They are free cash requests from our free cash certification. They amount to a little over $4 million. I did it because the free cash number that we received was significantly better than I had anticipated. We have a free cash certification for the close of our books in FY '20 of over $13 million. So I felt confident coming to you with these requests. Even if the council were to adopt all these requests, we will still have adequate free cash to do all that we want to do in our CIP, which is another roughly $5 million, pay for all our anticipated deficits at the close of the year. We always have some, but I don't think they're going to amount to more than half a million dollars or so. And cover what we need to balance our budget in fiscal year '22, a number that'll be significantly less than the $5 million we used last year. I don't know exactly what the number will be for FY '22, but it'll be more in line with what we always support our budget with free cash, which is generally somewhere between $1 million or so. Actually, I think the number this year will be under $1 million, but I haven't finalized the budget yet. You'll have that on May 1st. But I have enough free cash, we have enough free cash to do what I'm asking here, and we will have more than enough to cover all of our remaining needs in FY '21, as well as support our budget for FY '22 and still have free cash left over to fall to the bottom line for the close of the books in FY '22. So having said that, let me just go, I can relatively quickly go through each of these and then I'll answer any question. So, the first one is the Bunker Hill Scholarship Program. You've supported this each of the last three years. This is the program in the Chelsea Public Schools that pays for associates degrees at Bunker Hill for Chelsea High School students who meet certain qualifications by taking college courses and passing and meeting certain standards in those courses during the course of their high school career. And then if they decide to matriculate at Bunker Hill, we pay for them to get the associate's degree and the cost to do that for the class of fiscal year of the high school class of 2021 and continue to pay for the previous students we're paying for to complete their degree is $211,750. I want to continue the senior transportation program. This was a good program we offered to our seniors. Obviously, it all came to a halt last March when we basically closed the senior center, but we anticipate reopening the senior center, hopefully sometime this summer. Yes?
Mr. Manager, my colleague is asking that either you raise the microphone up higher or if you want to just remove the mask and maybe we put the Plexilias in front of you so that we can hear you more clearly?
I can raise it and speak more clearly into the microphone.
That better for you?
Okay.
Okay.
So, we have a senior transportation program. I want to continue it. We expect that the senior center will be open, hopefully full-time, sometime during the course of the summer. And this recommendation will allow us to restore the senior transportation program that we previously offered where we picked up seniors at a handful of senior complexes around the city, brought them to the senior center, as well as did some trips to Market Basket for them. The third item is funding our employee tuition program. We do have a program for non-public safety employees. I say that because public safety employees get paid extra, they get educational incentives for extra pay for earning degrees. We don't provide that for most of our employees, but what we provide these other employees is we help to pay for...
Page two, so far, where the order was, I think you skipped, so you might have the pages, but the pages are Bunker Hill Community College Scholarship Program, Senior Transportation. Page two is the employee tuition.
Wrong thing, but the wrong one.
But if you look at page two, you have, you stapled them in the wrong order, but page two is, all right, so, go ahead. Sorry, Mr. Manager, the letter itself was in the wrong order.
Okay, so...
You are correct.
If you have, if it's on your third page and then the continuation of the employee tuition program, this is a program for employees. We pay for their tuition and to, if they're, if they're seeking a degree that's beneficial to what they're doing here at City Hall, and we've had that program for a while. It's been part of their union contract for a long time, but it's not always been funded. We started to fund it back in 2018 and this appropriation should get us through at least '22 and probably longer than that, but at least through 2022 if you add another $50,000 to this program. The next item is support for outdoor dining. I would, I'm recommending to the council that we do a very small outdoor dining grant program where we can provide grants for restaurants that wish to do some outdoor dining, to buy the sort of equipment that they might need, the chairs, the tables, the, you know, perhaps heating elements that they want. This was a little bit of a barrier last time around and we're trying to really help restaurants recover and this is one way to do it. We think a small program that provides $5,000 grants would be helpful and so that's what we're proposing. It would take care of, you know, a dozen or so restaurants that might be interested. We don't have a huge number interested in doing this, but we have enough that we'd like to do a small grant program. The seasonal workforce program?
Continue, Mr. Manager, don't worry.
The seasonal workforce program, we talked about at great length at the last Subcommittee meeting. This is the program to create a seasonal beautification workforce that would help us keep up with parks and streets in the course of the summer and fall season, spring, summer, fall, basically a program that runs from April to October. You have the breakdown attached. The cost is $292,850. The Forbes demolition work, this is work that we think we're going to have to do at some point soon. These buildings are in a state of disrepair. We feel they're dangerous, they need to be shored up, there may need to be some small demolition done, there's going to have to be asbestos work done before we can do that. This is not going to be inexpensive. Obviously, we will issue orders to the owner to do this and we will follow the required statutory procedure for issuing those orders, but when an owner doesn't have any money and refuses to do it, the statutes give the city the authority to go in and do the work and we put a lien on the property to recover our costs with interest, with statutory interest, which runs at 14%.
Mr. City Manager, I think we have a question on this one.
Sure.
Okay.
Lean on the, to recover the funds?
Yes, at the statutory interest of 14%.
So either way, we should be able to have them pay for it?
We always get our money back.
We just might have to wait.
Yes, we'll get our money back with interest and in the worst-case scenario, we'll own a very valuable piece of property if it's not paid.
Thank you. Counselor Robinson?
Do we have a number actually on the asbestos removal?
No, this is just to get us to a point where we can do the full assessment, do a little bit of a Band-Aid work to make it as safe as we can. I expect that at the end of the day, this demo work is gonna, if we did the full scope of what might be required, this could be a multimillion-dollar effort. I just really try, I want to try to make it as safe as we can for the time being. So we do need to get some experts in there to do some, a little bit of abatement, to get a better sense as to the scope of work we're looking at, and we need some money to get started.
Right. Do we know how many buildings we're going to raise once we go into the property?
Not at this point, no.
Okay, so we're definitely going to be looking at a higher number than the $200,000 that's before us tonight.
If it turns out that we actually can't wait on the remaining work, yes. My hope is that we're going to be able to get away with doing sort of a Band-Aid approach just to make it safe for the time being.
Counselor Brown, then Counselor Recupero.
I got a question regarding the dining, the restaurant, outdoor dining.
Counselor Brown, lower the microphone so you're right, thank you.
Do we have any idea how many restaurants have stated they'd be interested in this? And I know we had some earlier, but of course, because of some of the hurdles, it seemed like there was not a lot of interest. I mean, have you had any indication of how many restaurants have reached out to you about this?
Me personally, no, but talking with Alex and Lord Ace, who've been out on the street trying to sort of drum up business for this program, we, you know, that's why it's modest. We think maybe there's a 10 or 12 that might be interested in this effort. And so they would be capped at $5,000 and obviously if there's money left over, we would redirect it to some other use with the council's approval, of course. Oh, Alex is here, sorry. Alex, maybe you can, you've been out there, so you've talked to some.
Just a question regarding...
Yeah, how many, what is the expected, what do you have so far as far as the number of parties that are interested in participating in the $5,000 program for outdoor dining?
Yeah, sure. So, so far, we have eight parties that have expressed interest in applying for grant funds through the program. We wanted to budget funds in order to serve a handful of other applicants. Moreover, there is funding in this request for Jersey barriers that would be used in busier corridors such as the Broadway District for safety reasons.
Counselor Recupero?
I have a question about this $292,000. Okay, one of the question I asked before is, a simple one, right? Why do we have exactly 27 jobs? That I can't understand. Why do we need exactly 27? Why can't it be 10? Why does it have to be exactly 27? And for another, are these jobs going to be permanent jobs for the same people or they're going to change?
So the number of jobs was 25 part-time employees. We just looked at the city, broke it up into geographic areas and assigned a couple of individuals to each of the geographic areas. So the idea is to cover the whole city with this program and assign a couple of employees to each area. In terms of are they, they're temporary jobs that will last only from April to October. As I've said before, it is possible that someone could reapply the next year and if they were really good, we'd probably want them back. But my experience with a program like this in Revere is that every year you have people that drop out and every year you get some new people and every year you have a few holdovers. It's just the way these kind of programs work. People move on, they get permanent jobs, or they're not very good and we don't want them back. So each year, there's a mix of returnees and new people.
Well, I know that we're going into this, but I think that I'd rather have him finish the whole thing again and leave off where you were last time, so, before we jump in. So I just wanted to make sure it was clarification questions and then we'll go back. So, Mr. City Manager, I believe you were at the Forbes demolition work and now moved on from there, the quiet zone?
So the quiet zone, this is the construction cost, this is the remaining construction cost. At least this is our estimate as of today as to what this project is going to cost. We are at the mercy of the Federal Railroad Administration. They have not signed off on our design yet. They could require more work than what we're proposing. They're supposed to come to the city for a site visit sometime at the end of April and then we'll know a little bit more. You know, it's possible these costs could go up, but I don't think I'll need more of an appropriation than this because this is a reimbursable program and this, you're, I'm basically asking you to fund the full amount of construction, at which point we'll put in for periodic reimbursement, we'll get some money back because we have a grant of up to $1.3 million for this. And so, at the end of the day, this account will likely have some surplus left in it when we get fully reimbursed by the Federal Railroad Administration. How much of a surplus it will have will depend upon what extra work the FRA requires us to do beyond what we have estimated as of this point. Whatever money is left over in this account will be an excess capital project and we will be able to use it for future capital projects with a transfer request as we often do with, before the city council. So if there's surplus, it will sit in this capital account and we will have an opportunity with the council's assent to transfer to another capital project. But we do need to cover the full cost of construction at the very start in order to sign a contract with a contractor. The next item is additional streetlights. This is just, we've appropriated a fair amount of money for the streetlight improvement program, but we want to continue it. Most of our residents really appreciate the more vibrant lights that we have put up in neighborhoods and this additional money will simply allow us to continue in some areas that we haven't yet been in. The technology improvements, as I mentioned in my letter, these are significant expenditures in IT that we talked a lot about before we submitted the CIP and held back on them because I was trying to keep at that point in early, in January, when I wasn't sure how much free cash we were getting, I was a little reticent to have a free cash component of that that was over $5 million. So we purposely kept it under $5 million and we carved out some of these IT requests that Ramon had really been pushing for, but we said, let's see what we get for free cash. Now that we have a very healthy free cash number, I'd like to move forward with some of these things. They're important for us continuing to have a secure system. We just, we're doing enormous amount of remote engagement in the city. It's requiring a lot more infrastructure and a lot more security and so a lot of these items are necessary to ensure that we have a highly functioning system. And so that's the IT technology improvements. Ramon is here and could probably get into more detail if you really would like that. The Admirals Hill Pump Station, this was a problem that surfaced just after we submitted our FY '22 CIP. There was an inspection in the station sometime in the early, in the late winter and it failed inspection. The fire suppression system has a problem. We really can't wait to fix this and so we're asking to pay this. This will come not out of free cash, this will come out of retained earnings, which is the equivalent of free cash in our water sewer enterprise system. Building repairs, this is something Fidel would really like to pursue given the number we have available. This is just, we always have deferred building maintenance, we try to do a lot each year. We did cut back on the amount we put in for building maintenance this year at the start of FY '21 just to save some costs, but some of these things we really would like to do and now that we have a little money, we'd like to move forward, most specifically as identified in this letter, an upgrade to the senior center. And so that's, that would require both materials and labor for that project. And then street and sidewalk overtime, we get all sorts of requests for our street and sidewalk work in the city. We're not going to be able to do it without overtime. This actually, this appropriation would put us in line with what we actually spent in fiscal year '20. We cut our fiscal year '21 overtime at the start of the year, again in an effort to save costs. This will basically restore what we typically spend in a year and what we actually spent in FY '20 and it'll allow us to do some work in our streets and sidewalks for the remainder of this fiscal year. Especially, it will allow us to do some of the work that I'd like to do with these seasonal workers. Understand, the proposed program, if it's successful, will run from April to October each year, that's the goal. But if you were to fund this program tonight, this money's not going to be available to us until sometime in late May. By the time we hire people this year, we're talking about mid-June at the earliest probably. So if we want to do some robust work in the next couple of months, we're going to need to do it via DPW overtime. We just won't have these people hired in time for this fiscal year. And that's the, that's the total request, they amount to a little over $4 million, but as I said, given our healthy free cash number, we are in a good position right now to fund all of these requests.
Counselor Recupero?
On the lights, right? Is that going to be all over the city or do you already started with that section? Is that going to save us money?
This really isn't about saving us money. This is about upgrading the lights in our neighborhood. So in a lot of areas, your area in particular, we have upgraded most of the lights. We've done a lot in Prattville, we've done a lot in a lot of areas, but there are still some streets that have the old lights and you can, you can really tell the difference now when you go on a street that has the old lights versus the new ones that we've installed. So this is just to continue the program and to continue to add more streets to the...
So how many have we done so far that you changed?
I don't know the number. I gave you a breakdown a couple of months ago, but we've probably spent, we've probably spent half a million dollars or more on this program so far.
So you already have, so this will be the additional $200,000 is to do, an additional...
Yeah, I don't know. Perhaps Fidel knows how many you can do with this amount of money. I don't know the exact number of lights you can replace.
So if the money is appropriated, we would go out to bid, obviously, and award a contract. So it really depends on the bid price, but what, what we have seen in the past is that it's roughly $400 a light, $400 a light, right? So just, just doing the math real quick, it's about 500 lights.
So would that do a quarter of the city?
It's hard to say. I mean, we've, we've done probably, probably about 2,000 lights already, right? I mean, so this, this is going to be the, the, the third time that the, the city council funds, you know, this project, right? So the, the first time that it was done, you gave us $150,000. The second time it was done, you gave us $400,000 and now we're asking for another $200,000. The, the amount of streets that are, are left are definitely lower, but there are some streets left that, that we, we want to do, right? And so at this point, all the ulteriors, all of the main roads have been done in Chelsea and a lot of, your neighborhood has actually been done. The majority of Counselor Lopez, the neighborhood has been done. We've done a lot in Prattville, but particularly in the Soldier's Home area, there are some streets that are not done. We did, we did Eleanor and we did Clark recently and in those streets in particular, I mean, it makes a huge difference.
So at the end, right, after we appropriate this, right, then you're going to come back and appropriate some more to finish doing all the city? So in other words, your goal is to, every city, every streetlight in a city has to have, you're going to replace them?
That's my goal, as long as you keep, keep up funding the initiative, absolutely. That's definitely the goal.
Well, that's, that's, you know, you're going to, that's a good goal to replace them all and make it brighter. But I'm saying, after this $200,000, would you need more? Like how much more would you, when you come back to us, right, with this $200,000? So far, for the money you spent, you should have done half of the city, right?
Yeah, I would say that, that we have done more than half of the city. It's just hard to say because we, we don't have a, a, a full survey of how many streetlights are in the city, right? I mean, so we're, we're taking one neighborhood at a time, right? So I'm, I'm sure that I can pay an engineer, you know, to do a survey of the lights, but I would rather spend that money on actually replacing fixtures.
Thank you.
Counselor Taylor?
So, I'm looking at the IT tech, the technology improvements and can Ramon maybe discuss exactly or precisely what these, what the money would be used for? I mean, I'm, I'm looking forward, is this a, really going to be a post-COVID need to do this? So it just depends exactly what's being upgraded, I suppose?
As a matter of fact, it's not just related to COVID, it's a series of upgrades that we have to do. We have been delaying those for years.
I see.
Looking forward for an opportunity where our funds are basically in a good state. We didn't want to do investments or increase the overall budget every year just because we wanted to do upgrades, just like that. Also, IT was in a reorg a few years ago, so we had to delay any upgrades until the crew, the new crew is up to date on what is in the network, phone systems and those type of things. Then COVID hit us.
So, so, so that's, that's the reason why I'm asking because I'm all in favor of upgrading the city's technology in, in almost every fashion, but you know, if it was specifically for, you know, Zoom and WebEx, I mean, we may not be using that post-COVID as much as we are now, so I don't...
You are, you are totally correct. This is not just that type of technology. It's overall, it's for the phone system, it's for computers, it's for storage.
And that's for the, all the departments as far as the, all of, all of their systems and...
Everybody. This is not just for City Hall or senior center. This is covering public safety, E911.
Okay.
And even the school business and part of the school system.
Okay, perfect. That's, that's what I wanted to hear. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Counselor Lopez?
Yeah, just under $200,000 for the street lighting improvements. My question, I'm probably going to sound, I don't know how you're going to call me, but we're asking about money for fixing lights. This light hasn't been fixed for about three or four years.
So you're raising this issue that we come across a lot, which are individual lights that are out and not fixed. And that almost, whenever there's a delay in fixing a light that a council has brought to our attention, it is always because there is some problem, not with the light itself, but with the electrical system to that light. And it's always an ever-source issue. We don't own the electrical connection, we own the light itself. We send our contract out all the time to check the light. The contractor will say, the light is working fine, there's a problem with the electrical connection to the... The contractor will say, "The light is working fine, there's a problem with the electrical connection to that light, and we have to put a work order into Eversource." And they are just notoriously slow to respond to certain individual light requests. And there's been lights that I've been waiting for, for three years to be activated, and they're just, you know, Fidel deals with Eversource on a regular basis. He can tell you how frustrating it is sometimes to try to get that entity to respond to a single electrical issue with a light. It is just not a high priority for them, so you're at the end of their priority list. But that's why we have individual lights that are out. We will, this program is to upgrade the existing lights that are working. They're just very dim. And what I'm saying is, even in your district, even though we've done most of the streets, there are still a handful of streets, you can now easily tell the difference at night when you drive on a street that has the new lights and then end up on a street that has the old set of lights. There's a dramatic difference in illumination. And most of our residents really like the new lights.
My question is, if we're going to try to improve all the lights, we should fix all those lights. We should try to fix the lights. If we're going to spend money, you know, bring it up to the highest set. I think we should do our best to fix all that. I know you're saying that it's Eversource or whoever, but, you know.
So I would love nothing more than to send our own contractor out there, pay him or her to fix the electrical system, but we don't have jurisdiction and they can't touch that Eversource system. It can only be done by Eversource and/or its contractors.
Councilor Cooper.
I'm going back to what my fellow councillor said. I, I, we, we were told before, we have a contractor that fixes these lights, right? We contract someone out, right?
Yes.
Does this contractor go out and see which lights are out? Or is that our job to see which ones are out?
No, we don't send our contractor out to survey the city. Our contractor responds to requests for service. So when people call when the light is out in front of their house, basically, and say, "The light is out", we send our contractor out to fix it. Our contractor, my experience is, is pretty responsive, usually gets out there in a reasonable period of time and will immediately fix the light, as long as it's not an electrical problem for the electrical connection to the light. If the light needs to be replaced, our contractor will replace the light and it'll be working again. When it's not working for a long time, it means that there's this electrical connection problem, and that requires an Eversource solution.
Do we periodically go out and look what lights are out?
We generally don't.
It's up to the people to call?
Yes, we, and most people do. When there's a light out in front of their house, people will typically call to say. Or sometimes, you know, all of us, I drive by and see a light out at night, I send Fidel a, an email, or he sees it. But we don't pay someone just to drive around the city at night looking for lights, so we do not do that.
Thank you.
Councilor Robinson.
Actually, my street has benefited by the new lights, and, and I would recommend that for the whole city. And I think this 200,000 will be well worth spending, and I think people would see the difference. I mean, my street went from night to day. I mean, and all my neighbors are happy to see that the lighting is much more brighter and they feel a lot more safer at nighttime coming home.
Yes, that's my experience. There's a dramatic difference in the lights we install versus that old brand of light that has been there for a decade or more.
Any other questions?
On the railroad improvements?
Yes.
I think you sent us an email earlier saying that it's going to, the, the work's basically being postponed because they're, we're required now to do more work. Is that still, when, when is that scheduled to be done? Or we really won't know until they come out at the end of April?
Correct. If this is the required scope of work accepted by Federal Railroad Administration, the anticipated completion date is December of 2021.
Okay, so that's what, December of when?
2021. If the Federal Railroad Administration requires more work, it will likely push the completion date into the spring of 2022.
So this is for the six crossings, right? Not four crossings?
Yes, this is for the six crossings, which delayed it till the end of December.
Right, right.
But the FRA, in reviewing our design for the six crossing, has raised some questions about even more work at the six crossings, which will require additional construction and will, if they force the issue, probably extend the schedule for another three months. But we don't know that. They have to come out and do a, they're coming out to the city. I, I don't think they have a date yet, it's supposed to be the end of April.
But they're not going to add crossings?
We only have six. They're making us work on them all, yes.
Tom, I have a question, and, I mean, I don't want to open up a can of worms, but I just, I just thought of something, and maybe you can explain to me. Three of the crossings, I believe, were done over or were part of a doing over by Mastod, as part of the Silver Line. And yet, those railroad crossings did not meet the guidelines of the FAA?
You need four quadrant gates.
So.
They only have, all the crossings, even the ones that were improved by the T, only have two gates.
But the, but what I'm trying to get at is, the MBTA themselves didn't follow FAA guidelines?
Oh, they did follow FRA guidelines. But to get a quiet zone requires a level of safety that far exceeds what the T is required to do. The FRA does not like quiet zones. They don't want these installed. They want whistles to blow at every crossing because in their estimation, that is the safest way to protect people. So if you want this, they make you bring a level of safety that far exceeds anything a railroad has to do. And so that's what they're requiring us, four quadrant gates at each of the crossings. The railroad is not required to do that, it's not necessary. You can meet the standards for safety with something significantly less because they say the trains are going to blow.
Okay. Councilor Lopez.
The funds for season modification. We have DPW, we have people from ROKA, the Jude Summer workers, and prisoners. If we hire these all, 27 or 25 positions, where are they going to be working?
The ROKA crew?
All of them.
The, the seasonal workers, we're going to divide across the city, a couple in each geographic area of the city, and they'll be responsible for that plot of, of the city, and there'll be two of them. We will still have the ROKA crew. That crew's about five, four or five people that comes four days a week, and we will make good use of them. But it's just not sufficient to do the level of work I want to do in this seasonal effort. Again, this is a seasonal effort for when the weather gets better, more people are out, the parks are in use. It's not year-round. Go ahead.
Yeah, sure. So on this, on this point, so, uh, uh, I want to make sure that, that, uh, DPW's commitment and, and, and support of ROKA is, is not in jeopardy, right? I mean, we, we, we believe in, in the work of ROKA. We, we, we support the effort 100%. It's just the, the, the amount of labor that is required to keep up with, with trash in the city is not enough to what we have. So ROKA sends us four days a week, four or five employees, right? And, 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 and we typically deploy them to areas where we, we get complaints all the time, right? So, so four employees is, is essentially one crew, right? So, so they, they will clean, for example, the, the area under the bridge that, that is constantly in complaints, right? In terms of DPW workers, we, we have 19 workers, right, in DPW. If you can imagine, in the summertime, right? We, we have these, these employees who, who, who are doing sidewalks, who, who are doing street signs, who, who, who are trimming trees, right? And, and, and every morning, when, when we assign the works, we, we try to keep four of those 17 employees to just do cleanup. And, and, and those four, it, it takes them pretty much a full time to do, do a daily cleaning of, of, of the downtown every day, right? So, so if, if you think that, you know, that, if, if you imagine that, that, uh, it takes four employees every day to do the downtown, right? It, 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 we just don't have enough resources to, to keep up with, with, with your district, right? Or, or, or Councilor Recuper's district, or, or, or even Councilor Sabbath's district. So what, what, what happens is that the, uh, in order to, 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 uh, keep the, the, the streets and sidewalks clean every day, which is, I believe, i- is, is the expectation, we, these, a lot of these streets actually need attention every day.
Good, sorry. Tom, you know, the, the DPW commissioner just verified or just spoke in, in support of continued partnership or collaboration with ROKA. So that means, I have to, I have this question. The budget that you plan on presenting to the city council, what is the amount that will be, have a line item for ROKA this year?
I think that contract is 155,000. I just have to, it's either 150 or 155, I have to double.
So the 155 covers those four guys for four days a week, whatever it may be? Okay. Also, there was talk about the commitment to, that there's only about the summer jobs youth program. Of that, there's really four total, from the number of youth that are employed or in, participate in the program of the city's youth program, which is SEIU run by the collaborative. What is the commitment from the city to the SEIU this year? What is that number?
We bumped it up by 15,000 to take into account the raise in the minimum wage so that the number of youth could stay the same. I, off the top of my head, it's around 150 or so, I could check that. I, I forget what the number is. Whatever it was last year, we've added 15,000 to it for the sole purpose of ensuring that the same number of youth can be accommodated, given the increase in the minimum wage.
So the summer jobs program by the city is $150,000 roughly?
We, we fund two programs. We fund the SEIU that the collaborative handles. We also fund, in part, the Green Roots Echo program for 20,000. We're going to increase that by 5,000 as well. So we're increasing the collaborative program by 15,000. This is the proposal that you will see, is a total increase in summer youth jobs of 20,000, 15 to the collaborative, 5 to Green Roots.
The, and, but the Echo kids, they, they, they only participate in cleanup once a year, they're not doing the cleanup.
Yeah, that's a, they, they're just youth that are focused on environmental justice, but they're summer-employed, and it's a good program for our youth.
Okay, so we're talking about, again, just remind me again, are we talking about $150,000 you said the city gives to SEIU? SYEIU, Summer Youth Employment Initiative? SYEIU, I can't remember the initials right now, but.
Yeah, Summer Youth Employment Initiative.
So 150 and then 25, and then 20,000.
25 for Echo, and then there's a separate ROKA contract in the DPW budget, which is either 150 or 155,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to clarify, the, the, the summer employment program, right?
Can you come closer so they can hear?
A lot of those employees do more than just trash, right? So, so, and historically, the, the, the number of employees who, who, of, of those summer youths who have done trash has gone down. And, and, and the reason is that there is a focus in, in, in the funding and the initiative to, to teach those youths more, more technical skills, more, more technological skills, right? So, so the, uh, not, not all $150,000 of the funds that is, is given for the summer youth program is, is spent outside, right? So, so, in fact, last summer, I don't believe we, we got any summer youth kids, but, but it was because of COVID, right? I mean, and, and, and they were doing work indoors, basically. The, the, the year before that, we, we only got four employees, right, of this program to, to, to actually work outside, right? So, so the, 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 the focus of, of, of the summer youth program has shifted a little bit, and, and it's great. They're, they're getting, uh, more experience with, with computers, with, with customer service, right? I mean, and, and, and I don't see that going back, that, that, uh, all of a sudden, the, the, the number of summer youths is, is going to go back up to, you know, say, say 20 or so. So the, the, all I am saying is that in reality, the, the, the summer youth program only gives us, you know, from, from probably four or five summer youths who, who are involved in actual cleanup work.
No, Fidel, I've been involved with this, the summer youth employment program since its inception. I'm very well aware of what it does and what it tries to do. I'm also well aware of how hard it is to, for them to place youth and find locations. There are many businesses that just don't take them on because they don't want to invest time and effort on temporary employees, particularly youth, when they're going to leave. I also have to be well aware of the impact of COVID has had, both last summer and this summer, that there are not as many inside computer jobs available for people because those workplaces no longer exist. So, no, but I am very aware of what they can do, but I'm also aware that they had park rangers. I know, for example, last year, I believe, we weren't allowing people to congregate in parks, you know, because we couldn't do lunch programs and have people playing basketball and all of the things that we were normally doing in the summer. So I am well aware of what the program is, but I just needed to get an idea of what is the financial commitment that this city has presently to ROKA and to the summer jobs youth program and Echo. So I just needed numbers in my head to understand what was going on in the presence. So that's all.
No, no, absolutely. Uh, uh, two years ago, actually, we, we had two of the summer youths actually work in our office, and, and they made the maps that, you know, we, you'll see at, at the entrances in City Hall, right? So, so, so they, they made a weight finding, a, a weight finding project that, to improve accessibility in City Hall. I mean, the, the, again, this is, this is not to say that, you know, that public works, it, it's not supportive of, 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 of any of these programs. It, it's more to say, you know, the, the expectation of, of trash in the city is, is increasing. The, the complaints of trash in the city is increasing, and, and, and I think, you know, the, the majority of the city council and our residents are, are, are becoming frustrated with, with the level of trash that's, that's on our streets and our sidewalks. And, and I really believe that the, the solution is, is to put boots on the ground, and, and I think this program is, is a good answer.
Okay. I'm just reminded that the IT needs at least five minutes between this session and the next one. So at this time, I'd like to see, the city man, I'm sorry. I'll let Councilor Robinson, please, final questions, Councilor Robinson, and then a final statement by the city manager.
Just a, a very quick one. I want to know what role that DPW will play, and can there be a plan that we could look at before we even vote on this matter? I want to see how everything's going to intertwine and how it's supposedly going to work.
So we, the goal is to have a, hire a supervisor at a higher rate of pay to oversee this group of people. And that's, I can have Fidel talk about it, but the idea would be we're going to hire an individual to supervise this group of seasonal employees.
And who, who's a sup, who's a supervisor going to report to, that we know that?
I would have to have Fidel answer that, could be him.
Yeah, we had two meetings, I believe, on this issue. I mean, and the proposal is essentially, we would hire one supervisor, right, who's boots on the ground. The supervisor would report to me. And they would be supported by our streets and sidewalk staff, right? So any purchases that have to be made, like trash bags, you know, like rakes and things like that, basically, our streets and sidewalks crew would handle. But in terms of the management, they would report directly to me. And, I mean, and, you know, I would get feedback from all the councillors on a daily basis, like I do now, right? I mean, and any issues that come up would be dispatched, you know, immediately to that supervisor.
All right, thank you.
Mr. City Manager, any final comments?
No, I just... I honestly think these are all efforts that are really beneficial to the residents of Chelsea. We have the funding to do this. These are one-time expenditures for the most part, and I'd ask the council to approve them. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will conclude the subcommittee conference on the financial request by the city manager. We will shut this down and then recome back at 7:00 PM for our regularly scheduled meeting. Thank you.